We now are here at 7:00. Sixteen years. Meeting of the Situete County Planning Board. Public agenda for today. I move that we accept the schedule. Hello, this is David.
Hi.
Thanks, everybody, for coming today. Couple of things I'd like to get on the record here. Bear with me for a minute. First thing I want to do. Are you ready?
Hello, how's that?
Much better. Want to talk to this? Hello. Is that working? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right.
I don't, we'll find you.
Great. Good evening. Just start out with something we need to get on the record. In accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11, in the Situete zoning by law, Section 770, site plan review, the planning board is conducting a public hearing today on Thursday, August 13, 2015, beginning at 7:00 p.m. The hearing was originally scheduled to take place in the Selective Hearing Room, Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Situete. As you can see, we have moved this hearing to the Situete High School Library in order to ensure we had an adequate room for attendees. The subject of this hearing is an application for a major site plan review in stormwater permit submitted by the town of Situete, property located at 606 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, regarding the construction of a new middle school, renovation of part of the existing high school in order to construct a new performing arts center at the existing high school, along with associated parking, utilities, and landscaping. Property is as shown on the Saturday map, 39-9-F. The planning board and the Conservation Commission had originally planned a whole joint hearing here today, but due to some post being technicalities, joint hearing will not occur tonight. Tonight will be the aforementioned planning board public hearing only. Conservation Commission hearing will be continued until Wednesday, August 19, 2015, at approximately 7:30 p.m. And that will be the approach of the Conservations with State law. The planning board tonight will be considering aspects of the major site plan that is allowed to reasonably regulate without interfering with the educational purposes of the project in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 3. Section 3 defines eight areas that are subject to reasonable zoning regulation, including the bulk of the structure, height of the structure, yard sizes, lot areas, setbacks, open space, parking, and building covered by. Stormwater will also be discussed in the applicant who filed for stormwater permit. Given that the property is within the town's Water Resources Protection District, we will also discuss protection of town's water spot. Parking and traffic will also be discussed. We understand that the personnel from the school and town are investigating the Route 3A, First Parish Road intersection with the goal of improving pedestrian and overall traffic safety. Our signalization on Route 3A is not going to propose that's part of the property at this time. Thank you all for coming. Before we begin, let me just give you a brief overview of what we're going to try to accomplish here. We have on the schedule roughly an hour and 15 minutes allotted for agenda. We'll need to be relatively efficient with our time. Here's how we intend to proceed. We'll begin with a presentation from the town's project team. We then follow up with office midbook from our town planner. And then I'll call in any planning board review experts who might be available to provide an overview when you make it up to this board. And then open it up to public comments. And in so doing, the board just asked that we be succinct. We recognize that others in the room are here to make comment as well and that we're on a fairly limited time clock right now. I will preserve ample time at the end of the session to allow my colleagues on the board to ask clarifying questions before ongoing deliberations. That's the process. And I'd like to begin with our project team. So then I'd ask you to introduce yourselves and then proceed.
First thing I recognize, it's a fair fight. I'm Don Walter, Principal of the Goldenwoodian Architects.
I'm sorry. Can't hear you.
Yeah. Hello, hello. I'm Don Walter, Principal of the Goldenwoodian Architects. And with you tonight, I have Don Richardson to my left, who is our project manager. Sandy Brock, Jennifer Johnson, and Jeff Van Beem to my right, all from Civic Engineering. They're civil and traffic consultants. And then down to my far right is Bill Brown, who is our landscape architect. So we will be presenting to you tonight and hopefully answer your questions and further than that. So that being said, our approach is going to be similar to what you had said in the beginning there. It's to give you an overview of the project. I think the board is familiar with the project, but in the interest of the public that's here, with your allowance, I thought we'd do a quick overview to give everyone proper information onto the site and then we'll get into some of the details. So that being said, what you have up on the screen is the proposed site plan. Just so everyone knows, the orange is the proposed new middle school. The salmon color is the proposed work in the high school, both renovation and new auditorium towards the top of the sheet. And the blue is the existing high school. To orient you on the site, this is Route 3A, Chief Justice Cushing Highway, right here. First Parish Road, running across the bottom. Town Hall, police, and fire substation located out in the front. The way the site currently works is we have access here from Chief Justice Cushing Highway for the existing high school and access here off of First Parish Road onto the site. And as you know, you currently can loop in, around, and back out. So that gives you a sense of where the building is on the site. What we're proposing to do is primarily to build a new middle school. And that is the orange piece that you see here with the main entrance coming in off of First Parish Road. Parents able to come in, drop off, loop, and go back out First Parish Road. There is parking located to the right. And just so everybody knows, that's where the existing place structure is now, Seaside Park and the wooded area behind there. So that's all located, kind of built into the hill. And this is that existing drive that was closed years ago out to Cedarwood Road. That would remain closed to vehicular traffic, which will be a pedestrian way up the hill and off to Cedarwood. The existing amenities off to the right here, the Kozlowski Courts, the Inland Skate Park, and Skate Park, and the tennis courts all remain as is in their current location. And basically, the way the building works is the main public entrance is located right here to the building with administration and lobby located here. As you move into the building, there is a dining commons cafeteria. And then further in, we're taking the existing high school auditorium and renovating that into a chorus, band, and dramatic arts space located right about here. And there will be a gymnasium, new gymnasium off to the right. On either side of the main entrance, and this is a two-story building, we have a sixth grade, two sixth grade teams, two seventh grade teams, and two eighth grade teams. So the building is set up, grade six through eight, on two stories. You're able to communicate vertically. The other way, important way into the building is that the bus loop for both the middle school and the high school comes in and branches off here from the main access point into the high school. Students for the middle school would come in and get off the bus here and walk down what we're calling an arts plaza. And the reason we're calling it that is that we've set up our, some of our arts spaces within the middle school. And this wing in the high school is a new art wing. So there'll be some collaboration happening outside between those two spaces. But for the purposes of students taking the bus, they'll actually enter the building through the dining commons in that plaza and then go in and circulate around. So you have parents dropping off and students coming in here at the front door and bus students coming in off that side door through the dining commons. Because we're taking that auditorium and utilizing it for those dramatic arts chorus and banners I mentioned earlier, we're building a new 750-seat auditorium located next to the existing gymnasium. So this parking lot is, currently exists, and we're building this new auditorium, which would be an auditorium, stage, band music, and theatrical support spaces, all located within this block. So that's a general overview of the work that we're doing, coming to the site, around the building. Oh, the other important feature in course, Conservation Commission is not hearing us tonight, is the veronal pool, the existing veronal pool. That's something that obviously we're keeping, but we're utilizing it really as an educational tool and we hope to enhance it. In fact, we plan on enhancing it by taking what is now mowed right up to the edge of that veronal pool. And quite frankly, in the fall, when it's very dry, it's mowed through the veronal pool. And we're going to restore that back to a more natural habitat with an extensive buffer all the way around that and an opportunity for students to come down through a stone dust path to get onto a dock and actually do some water sampling and observation from that deck. So it's not just a hole in the ground that gets full of deeps in the spring. It's actually going to be used as an educational feature on the site. So with that being said, what I'm going to do now is turn it over to Bill Brown to talk up to the next speaker.
I'm going to speak to this drawing eventually. But I wanted to point out a few things about the site before I start talking to this drawing. We're looking at handicap accessibility of the whole site. We aren't doing a lot of work on this side of the site. But there is, there are handicap spaces located here on the door. Handicap space located in the back as well. Also, there are handicap spaces.
Can't hear you.
Can you come up a little bit?
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great. So just to go back, we're looking at the whole site in terms of handicap accessibility. There are some areas that we really aren't doing a lot of work in, but we are looking at the complete site. So there are handicap spaces that are located here by the door. There's handicap spaces here for these recreational uses. There's another handicap space in this location. And we are redoing parts of the parking lot in here where we're providing handicap spaces with accessibility into the fieldhouse and then into the auditorium. There are some handicap spaces in an area that we really aren't doing that much work in, but we are redoing them in order to make them accessible. And there are a couple of spaces by this door that we are redoing the pavement and the curbing and the handicap ramps in order to gain access into this side door. So with that, I'd like to look at this other drawing here. And I don't know how visible it is to everyone. But one thing to, I think, realize and notice is that we are integrating stormwater management into the plan and we're saving as many significant existing trees as we can as well. I don't know if you are real familiar with how this site actually lays out, but there is a large oak tree that's in this location that we're saving as part of the proposed plan. There's also some large trees that are located here that we're saving as well. And obviously, we're saving the large trees that are around the veronal pool here. As Don mentioned, we are planting the least amount of lawn that we need to cut as possible. And this plan is rendered in a way that there is lawn that is going to need to be cut in this area and along the face of this building. But as we begin to transition down to the veronal pool where you're going to plant meadow grasses in this area in order to restore this area. And those meadow grasses, they can be kept and not mowed at all or it could be mowed once a year. Additionally, we're rehabilitating this side of the site where we're really not doing any grading, but we're going to cut the existing grass down as low as we can, clean it up, and again, seed it with meadow grass so that we turn it to a more natural condition. In addition to that, we are planting native species around the veronal pool. And in conversations with the Conservation Commission, they asked us to beef up the buffer between this drop-off area and the veronal pool. So we've added a significant amount of plant materials along those edges. One thing to point out, that I should have mentioned earlier, is service is located here in the back of the building. There's going to be a gate in this location and another gate up in here so that you can't get access around, you know, 360 degrees to the site. As Don had mentioned, there's science classrooms that are located here. We have a science garden outside so that they can use it for seasonal planting, vegetables, anything that has to do with their curriculum. There's a path that takes you down to a wooden ramp that takes you to a dock so that you'll be able to have access into the veronal pool itself. And that's something that the people with the Conservation Commission are either one of those to look at. Don had mentioned that we have an arts courtyard in this location. There's benches that are part of that. There's planting in there, obviously. It's going to be a really nice space for the students to enjoy. I think that you've reviewed the planting plans. The planting plans have mostly native species or some adapted species that are part of that. There was a comment made about one of the trees, two of the trees that we had selected and the ginkgos, which we will make sure are male. And we need to look at the location of the sweet gum tree to make sure that it's not close to sidewalks. And with the plan, we are, again, integrating stormwater management into the plan where we have stormwater management as part of the parking lots that are located here with native species. There was a comment with regard to soils on the site. We are reusing the topsoil. Our specification is such that, I suspect that the, some of the soils here are low in organics. The contractors required to test it and add organics to bring up the organic content, sand if necessary in order to increase the drainage. And then we have specifications for imported soils that they need to be to bring onto the site and use to mix with the soils that already exist here. So I think that, you know, with, one thing that I'm excited about, I think more than anything, is the ability to save all these existing trees around here. And especially this big oak tree, it can actually have quite an impact on the project. Thank you.
So, Mr. Engineering is a fellow engineer on the project. And we look at building services that will be required for water, sewer. Do you not hear me? Okay, I'll be close. We looked at the electrical services, water, sewers, drainage, gas. But tonight, I'm really here to focus on stormwater management. And as Phil said, there are a lot of things we're excited about on this project, but from a stormwater perspective, we're really excited about the improvement that we're going to be making to the existing site. Now, as you walk around, as you walk around the existing site right now, you'll notice that there's the bus stacking that's happening. There's just a lot of drainage that's flowing off pavement into catch basins and directly out to either the veronal pool or the wetlands located up here. And we're going to be capturing and treating all that water. So the first thing that we did when we started looking at the stormwater management was to identify the design points that are leading the property. And for this site, there are four. The first of which is the wetland that's located up here behind the existing track and field. The second is this intersection with Chief Justice Cushing Highway. And that is a connection to the closed drainage system in the highway. The third is the design point down at First Parish Road. And again, that is a closed drainage connection, meaning that stormwater is going into the pipe system. And the fourth is right here at the veronal pool, which actually also has a pipe connection that cuts through Town Hall. And all three of these are really, we believe, connected in the highway drainage system. But we monitored them independently to make sure we were meeting the treatment requirements and the quantity requirements for the project at all of those locations. Another thing to note is that this project is located in the Water Resources Protection District, or a portion of it is, mostly the southern half, actually, that drains to this closed drainage system. So we did take that into account when we designed the system to make sure that we were getting the highest level of treatment as possible and promoting as much groundwater recharge, putting as much water back into the ground as possible. Because the condition that you have right now is that almost all the water is running off the site directly into these wetlands and not being treated. So we took this opportunity to really improve that condition. The way that we're doing that, Phil kind of mentioned in his presentation, but if you look on his landscape plan over here, you can really see in the parking lot islands, there's green. And those areas are being used as filters for stormwater. So it will flow across the parking lot, be captured in these filters. There's one here, 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 here. I think there are six in total. So they're scattered throughout the site to really capture the water that's flowing close to it. And from those, we have some large subsurface infiltration systems, which you can see across the front of the building here and the bus drop-off loop here, and one on the north side of the site. And those are large underground chambers that collect water and give it a chance to soak back into the ground. One of the other requirements that Situete has as a town is that you have to, you can't increase the quantity of water flowing off the site, which is above and beyond the state standard. So by doing a large amount of recharge, we were able to meet that requirement. In areas where the site was a little bit congested or we weren't able to do a large filter, like a landscape feature down here, we do have some proprietary structures, which means there are a catch basin insert or a manhole structure that also provides water quality treatment. We tried to minimize those as much as possible, but they weren't needed in certain areas. We also use that application for existing catch basins that might not have otherwise been improved, but we were able to improve water quality there as well. I guess I'll just close in saying that Maryland Engineering was with team by the town to provide a review of the stormwater management design. We have received a letter and reviewed it. And we're prepared, actually, to formally respond to those comments, but we felt like they were pretty minor in nature and would be able to easily address in our paper documents. But, you know, we'll leave it to you if you want us to talk more about them specifically or how you'd like to handle those. For now, I guess I'll turn it over for a quick overview of the topic.
So I'm Jeff Van Beem. I'm the transportation consultant with Mitchell Engineering. So back in 2014, we were commissioned by our client in the town to produce a traffic study for the existing conditions and proposed conditions at the time at the site. So what we had done is we had taken inventory at the three major access points. We've taken inventory at the three major transportation nodes, I guess, if you will, of the site. Chief Justice Cushing Highway at the high school driveway here. First Parish Road at the high school entrance here. And also at the signalized intersection of Chief Justice Cushing Highway and First Parish Road located to the southwest of the site. So basically, just to give you a quick rundown of what a traffic study involves, basically, you take traffic counts at the three locations that I pointed out were deemed important to the, as far as the access and egress to and from the site. And what we do is we just try to get an idea for what the existing delay is in terms of what we're looking at. As far as lane configuration, roadway width, site distance, and also look at the distribution of traffic coming in and out of each driveway. If there's a lot of left-hand turns from one driveway or right-hand turns from another, just to kind of get a feel of some of the traffic circulation on site so that we can further predict what we feel is going to be reasonable as far as expanding the site to include the new middle school. So what we found is there was a lot of, you know, left-hand turns coming out of this high school driveway onto First Parish. The split between Chief Justice Cushing seemed to be sort of almost 50/50 coming out of here in the morning, more towards the northbound direction towards Boston. This going west on First Parish, not as much so. But it just kind of gave us an idea of looking at, say, the large amount of lefts coming out of here. And then looking further as to, you know, how are they getting to this direction? Are they, you know, are they coming straight down the high school driveway? Or are they making their way from? Because we know right now, as the site comes up and kind of loops around, there are a lot of folks utilizing the transverse roadways in the front and back of the Town Hall to get to sort of this way. And that kind of just made us, you know, think in terms of, can this be utilized as more of a formal roadway system in the future? And how that relates to the access and egress points in the future? So as you can see on the graphic here, we've illustrated the proposed circulation. As Don had mentioned, the middle school is contained entirely on this side as far as access and egress goes. Folks would come in First Parish, drop off, and loop around and come out basically the same way. Now, what we're showing on this graphic is that it is conceivable to come and turn right in front of the Town Hall and then come out Chief Justice Cushing Highway and then go right. That would be predominantly the movement during the morning timeframe, we feel. So as far as the high school goes, that would be predominantly on this side of the site. Over here, as you can see, as Don described during the, during the bus pickup and drop-off, has this kind of long sort of loop in here. There's an existing high school pickup and drop-off section in this part of the site, which will remain. So as you can see, most of the high school traffic is confined to this site. And again, I'd like to point out that, you know, when looping around this way, if you're speaking of pickup, drop-off in the morning, folks can come down this way to the, in front of the police and back of the Town Hall and come out this way and take First Parish back towards the eastern part of the site here. So what we did in terms of generating, trying to establish how many trips are going to be established through the new middle school, we used what's called the Institute of Transportation Engineers trip generation, which looks at the average rate of middle schools. They have all sorts of different sites, you know. For this, obviously, middle school would be the use that we would look into. And what the book tells us is it gives us sort of an average rate of number of trips per day, per morning peak hour, per afternoon peak hour. And that gives us sort of an idea of how many vehicles we're looking to add to the site. And what we did was we took that and we added it to the existing counts that we got at both access and egress points and through the major intersection here to kind of establish the effect or increase in delay that you would see at both nodes. So what we noted, when you add the 710 students to the middle school, is it doesn't equate to the addition of, say, double the amount of the high school here. It comes into maybe a fraction of what you're looking at now. And again, I believe that during the afternoon peak hour, when traffic on 3A and First Parish is, you know, of a lesser extent because it doesn't fall within the afternoon peak hour of the roadway that the traffic can be handled on site. As far as the morning goes, I think some improvements could be warranted in terms of extending and maybe a right turn, you know, adding additional egress lane here for an extra, maybe. I looked at the cycling strength, it looked to be about 400 feet. extra, maybe, I looked at the cycling strength, it looked to be about 400 feet of storage could be had here. But as I mentioned before, it looks to be a lot of folks come out of here and turn left. So separating left turns and right turns would be beneficial at this driveway, and much more so here, especially in the morning, when, like I said, you do have a lot of right turns coming out of here. So if you could add, you know, about 400 feet of queue space going up to around the southern portion of where this parking area is, I think that would be highly beneficial to the site in terms of operations. And when you talk about operational improvement, I think there's inherently a safety benefit as well. When you talk about better access and better operations, folks coming out of here, especially when turning left, you know, left turns are dangerous movement, as we all know, you've got to cross a lane and merge into another. It allows folks the ability to take the necessary time and not feel like they're taking chances. You know, they've got to get to work, or they've got to get to the next appointment, or things like that, so we really like to keep the improvements on site as much as we can do within our constraints, so that there is an operational and a safety benefit as well.
And just to, and I'm sure the planning board is aware of this, that for this site, the functions on the site are going to be changing over the next few years, and that's specifically that both the police and fire will be relocated to another site in town. So some of the traffic that's there now is going to be a little bit different by the time the actual middle school opens up. So there's that kind of step of when you have the existing commission with the high school and the students parking and so forth, then you can have construction, and so there's a construction kind of management, traffic plan. And then after that, you're going to have the opening of the middle school, and then by that time, both the police and fire will be gone. So it's a really good time to look at the operation of the site, and as Jeff was pointing out, of looking at the different kind of crossroads there and how that's used in the future. Where right now, where you have armed and police off of them, if there's a real conflict there, it's not going to be that way at the completed project. So there's a real benefit there on site, puts an improvement simply because the functions on the site are changing.
Your traffic flow is looped, correct? Like in terms of around high school and around the junior high?
Are you talking about existing or proposed?
Proposed.
Okay.
My concern is, is definitely existing sections. Has any thought been given to making a right turn only onto 3A at a given time during the morning? Have a right turn only on First Parish Road, so that people can then flip ramp, so that you have one way, this is now in front of Town Hall, one way behind, coming the other way behind the police station, so that it flows? Has any thought been given to that, to keep traffic moving? So that you cannot take a left? You need to take a right, or you don't? Do you follow what I'm trying to say?
I do. At this point, restriction of access to the site has not been, has not been given consideration, mostly for an operational standpoint. I understand, we understand the safety concern with folks, I mean, you know, just driving around here, the site distance is poor, and folks have a tendency to speed, and think, you know, and there's parking here, and there's parking over here. So as far as restricting access, no, we have not been given that consideration. Chief Justice Cushing Highway is a state highway, so I'm not sure if there would be some sort of permit process involved with restricting movements onto that roadway.
I think, Anne, you're talking more about egress off the side, not access to the side.
Okay.
Yeah. So actually, we have discussed that, especially as it relates to 3A, limits to the ability to come out and take a left-hand turn onto 3A, but actually go back behind police, Town Hall, and fire, and redirect people that way, so that you can go south on 3A to go left onto First Parish Road. The question about restricting the egress out onto First Parish and only being a right, I can tell you we haven't really discussed that, so we certainly could look at that. I'm not quite sure how that would work, if you've got two egress points taking a right. I guess basically, you're asking anyone that comes on the First Parish Road to take a right, and then people go left or right at the light. So we could certainly look at that.
My other concern are the gates that you're proposing in the back of the building. So that, you know, that probably should be one way all the way through, as it is now, so that it loops round and comes back, and comes back down again, really from a safety standpoint, because the parking spaces up there as well. So I really would like to really-
Talking about this area here?
Yes. I'd really like to rethink gates.
Yeah. What we were trying to do is limit that circulation around the building, because what that would do is encourage high school, whether they're students, parents, or staff, to come in and then go around the building to get to their parking spot, thus making the middle school site a cut-through. The goal with this particular strategy was to set it up so it was emergency access only, so emergency vehicles would have keys to come through. Yeah, separation of the two building uses.
When you're looking at the design of the school, one of the things on the safety concern is you separate bus drop-off from parent drop-off. So if you, on the way this is laid out now, with the loop coming in, the middle school, you're dedicating that for parent drop-off. And what you don't want to do, encourage, as Dawn was saying, a cut-through there, because that becomes a safety issue. So that's, whenever you're talking about a site like this, especially an existing site that you're now doing improvements to, you try to balance everything, you try to make certain criteria kind of take over others as far as safety goes. And really, one of the key points is drop-off of students, to make sure you don't have students, you know, intermeagring with other traffic going through, and that's kind of one of the safest ways to approach, you know, the standardized layout on the school, is try to keep that separate.
Well, that concludes our presentation. Just to give you a sense of our schedule, our plan is to be out to bid in October, with bid opening around the end of November, and actually, a phased project, but construction starting right around the end of the year, beginning of next year. So our hope tonight was to, you know, have this dialogue, receive your feedback and comments, and, you know, take those into consideration, be able to continue moving forward.
Let me move on, and start with Laura. Our model is our town plan. She's got a few quick, uh, pieces of information here.
Hi, everyone, and good evening. I just wanted to mention a couple of points. One is that this property, I think it was mentioned that it's in the Water Resource Protection District, and part of it is actually in a wellhead protection district, or it's owned to, to a public well. So the stormwater issues are really quite significant on a site like this. And in particular, what you want to do for the town's water supply is to both capture the volume and make sure that the water quality is good. So a lot of the improvements on this site were discussed by the town's consulting engineer, Merrill Associates, and one of the things that they highlighted was that, in many ways, this is a significant improvement over what was there before, because there was really very little treatment there. There were buses stored on the site, and I don't know how many buses, but it was, I would say maybe several dozen buses at least. And there was also an area where buses were repaired, tires were, you know, on the ground at many times. And all of those functions are going off the site, which will remove some of the possibilities for some of those substances on the wheels and on the bodies of the buses washing into the stormwater and potentially affecting the drinking water supply. The treatment was already described through the bioretention basins. One of the things that Merrill brought up, and that I think everyone should be concerned with a little bit, is to make sure that there's an operation and maintenance plan for those retention areas, to make sure they're maintained, and just small amount of maintenance that's necessary actually happens, instead of, you know, maybe kind of being inconvenient and kind of getting pushed to one side, or maybe being a budget issue. Merrill also brought up some fairly minor points. They wanted to see some additional soil borings in some of those bioretention areas. They wanted a signature and stamp from a P E on the statement of adequacy for the stormwater system. They wanted some more backup for some of the removal rates of total suspended solids in some of the, some of the proprietary stormwater features on the site. They also wanted to see some detail about how the stormwater would actually reach those bioretention areas, and more planting plans for those. I think the plan for the Vernal Pool, where that is actually going to be reviewed by the Conservation Commission, is being reviewed by the Conservation Commission, is maybe not a paramount issue for the planning board, but one thing that, that I think is an additional benefit besides the environmental, the obvious environmental ones, is that there had been somewhat of a problem with beefs in the past around that Vernal Pool, and I think when you have the taller grasses, you won't, you won't have anywhere near as much of that So, as far as the traffic is concerned, the town did hire a traffic peer review engineer along with Merrill Associates, who will be looking at a lot of the traffic issues, and just providing another pair of eyes on how the traffic flow through that site can be worked out efficiently, but also safely, and whether there are any tweaks that can be made to kind of improve how it's all going to function. The design review committee also reviewed the plans. They had two different meetings with the project team. The second one was on Tuesday. I believe they worked out most of the, most of the issues that they had. They were a little concerned with the mass of the auditorium, I think that's been dealt with. Some color issues, they looked at the light fixtures, they wanted to see some more benches added to the site, and they also were interested in the kind of signage that's going to be on the site. So I think we made some good progress on the peer review, and the traffic is really the main piece that's kind of left to finish.
Thank you, Laura. Yeah, I think that addresses most of the input we got from various organizations supporting the planning board. Is anybody from the Water Resources Commission here? Yes?
Yes.
I just wanted to see if we could get a five-minute overview of sort of your review recommendations.
My name is Martha Cook, I live at 3 Acorn Street. I'm also a butter to the project. I'm a member of the Water Resources Committee. We actually sent Laura our notes from our meeting on Tuesday night. We reviewed as many of the plans that were available to us. Kind of quickly, we didn't have a chance to get really in-depth, and we had some questions we weren't sure about. As far as the landscape architecture and the civil engineering for the Water Resources Protection, we're very well aware of the fact that it does impact a zone that we're very concerned about, and as you pointed out, there are wetlands to the east, west, and south of the project. The Vernal Pool, I'm thrilled to hear about the plantings. We were a little concerned about the materials that are going to be chosen for the walkway for the students. Educationally, it sounds like a wonderful concept, and I realize that you have the ABA restrictions you have to take into consideration. My eyes have recently been open to this, because my husband broke a split and he's been using crutches and a wheelchair, but we're very concerned about the 15% impervious cover concern, because while I am thrilled to hear you don't want to have a lot of grass mowing, you have to have a way for this water to get back into the underground system. And that was just one example we saw, was that we don't want to see a blacktop path leave the building to connect to the wooden walkway that then goes out to the dock. And I was happy to hear you say stoned us? I think you used that terminology, because that's not what the plan that we saw said. It said, I forget what it said. But that's great, that's good. That we'll be happy, that in any position where you can do that, instead of concrete, instead of brick, instead of blacktop, the more, right, the more-
Super.
Great. Great. That's, we're very happy to hear that. We echo what Laura was talking about, and we're very concerned about the long-term maintenance of these water retention situations. Historically, whenever a project like this has come up, the maintenance, long-term, does become a budgetary issue, as well as just a practical issue. And, you know, to get our approval and to win us over, to believe that this is going to do it, we really need some assurances that those delicate contraptions are going to be constantly maintained properly. This last winter, obviously, was a horrible situation, and we were thinking, where would you put this milk? And again, it accumulates dirt, sand, oil, things like that, and so we're happy to see that you've got that, and if you can squeeze more of that in, that's great. I believe there was a, there a rain garden or some drought-resistant plantings that you were looking at putting in?
Well, actually, there's- All the plants that were chosen for the site don't need to be watered-
Right.
-at all. And in addition to that, none of the plants are going to need to have maintenance where you have to trim them and clip them, so they'll be able to grow naturally. We are using some grasses on the site that we recommend that they be cut down in the fall. And the bioretention areas, we're planning on seeding those with an appropriate seed mix for those areas. And I would think that the maintenance for those areas is going to be fairly simple, because you just need to really mow them once, once a year. So I would recommend that, you know, the area between the Vernal Pool and where the mowed lawn is, is that you mow it just once a year, and then leave it to grow back again. So we're trying to limit the amount of mowing that needs to occur on site. You know, we're going to have native grasses up to the edge of the road in some locations, but what we normally do is we, at the end of the project, we produce a mowing plan, because what you need to do, you need to take about one or two mower lengths or whiffs and mow along the edges of the roadways, so that they don't hang in to the path of travel. So I think it's going to be fairly easy to maintain those areas.
And are you adding any trees?
To which areas? The site?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We would like to ask for tree boxes for more water filtration.
Tree boxes?
Mr. Morris may have to help me on this. I just learned about this myself. There's a particular kind of filtration process that when, before you put a new tree in, part of the way it's planted helps to collect the rainwater, and again, it's a species question as well, because you want it to be a tree that can stand wet root. Right. So what we did is we actually kind of took that tree box concept, and that's what the bioretention bases are, they're basically big tree boxes that actually cover much bigger areas. So we did really take into account that filtering, using the landscape process, just making it even a little bit bigger than you would with just a tree box. We have found that sometimes those trees don't survive as well, but if you have a bigger footprint like with a basin, you have more survival. And I just wanted to piggyback a little bit on what Bill was saying about maintenance, and kind of carry that into the stormwater discussion. We did select the empty management practices, like the bioretention basin, that are landscape based, so that they're easier to maintain. You know, I think a lot of times with stormwater, things get put underground and forgotten about. But with these types of practices, you see it, like, we should probably go out there and remove that trash, or remove that sediment, and it's more in the forefront of people's minds, I think, especially being supposed to Town Hall. And TNI and B W are right here, right? So hopefully, they would see that.
And it's even something we put that the students involved in with some of the L I D stuff. And with respect to the catch basins and the closed drainage, the proprietary structures that we picked have the same maintenance program as the catch basin. So it would be simple just to kind of expand it, to use the same type of backtuck or a super truck to maintain those. So we did keep that in mind, and we do have an operation and maintenance plan as part of our stormwater report that will be supplied to the town for future maintenance. So thank you.
We had other questions that pertain more to the inside of the building in terms of water-efficient plumbing, but obviously, we're not on that tonight, so we can discuss that with you another time.
I could answer that really quickly. We are pursuing lead for this project, so we will be specifying water sense fixtures on the inside.
Great. Thank you very much. Anything for me, any questions? Anything else we can take back to the committee?
No, I appreciate it. And I thank you all that have got the benefit of their input as well.
Super. Thank you.
Okay. We're at the stage of the... Maybe I could ask, people in the audience, how many people are, would like to make a public comment at this point? Trying to get a sense of how many we've got out there. Okay, it's not very many. So why don't we open up the public comment? Start with you over in the back. Can you just introduce yourself? Tell us where you, your address.
So my name is Katie Miller.
It might be better if you use...
My name is Katie Miller, and I live at 538 First Parish Road, which is on the west side of 3A. And so I'm here tonight to advocate for a crosswalk and a signal, which would include a push button, so we get a walk signal to cross 3A, the state highway. You know, we've talked a lot about traffic, and one way to reduce traffic is to have more walkers, and they need to do it safely. So I would like more children from the west end to feel like they can cross 3A safely. Currently, it's a disaster waiting to happen. So I'm curious how the town is working with the state, and then what can I do to move this walk?
I hope you have insight to that.
We don't have a direct answer for that, but just to let you know that we're continuing to work on that, any improvements, even off-site for the project.
Is there any conversation with the state?
Not directly right now, but we're going to take all this information back and take it under consideration.
Shouldn't the town be in conversations with the state? So I don't know if the...
Just first, we start representing the town, and the town is the applicant.
Sure. I don't elect them.
Yeah, so certainly, we communicate with the town on a regular basis through the Building Committee stuff.
And so are you talking to Headland, Cantwell, let's get them involved. Can you fill me in? Like, I'd love to know more. I don't know a lot.
Let me go over there.
Great.
Obviously, anything having to do with outside of the scope of the project is not on the project itself. And so we have been concerned, as the town has been concerned, relative to the safety of both traffic and walkers, bike riders, et cetera. And one of the reasons why we located the school here was because the ability to access it for that purpose. So I have been in communication with Representative Cantwell's office. He has been in communication with the town. He is in the process of trying to set up a meeting with M A S D O T and trying to look at every possible, in its eyes, we're not just looking at this area, we're going down 3A towards Cohasset, also looking at public safety conflicts as well, to see what improvements can be made to that area to make it safer for both pedestrian traffic as well as automobile traffic. So that process has begun, and it is outside of the scope of this project, but nevertheless, it is something that we are doing.
Thank you. You have something else you want to add? Yes.
My name is James Hunt, 66 Nanlot Road. I question the board's level of review for any project of this nature, if this were a private project. Traffic impacts and the mitigation of those impacts would be a requirement of the applicant. The traffic engineer in his written report clearly states that the level of service at both 3A and First Parish Road is unacceptable, the level of service at it. And there was some comments about indefinite queues due to lack of capacity. Now, as an applicant, from my experience, when I was on the Planning Board, the applicant was responsible for mitigating those effects. So to say that the impact of traffic on First Parish and 3A is outside the scope of the project is, in my view, not, is something the Planning Board needs to consider. And to consider approving this project without mitigating those traffic impacts would not be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to reiterate a point that I think Laura made earlier, is we do have an independent traffic engineer who will do a peer review of the report that was generated. That hasn't happened yet.
Can I ask when that will happen?
Well, it's in the works. We just got the traffic report on the 12th, so...
The traffic report was published in June of 2014.
No, we just got the...
It was an updated report.
Engineer's updated traffic report on the 12th.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? Yes.
I think I could talk loud enough. Ken Shizam, Cedarwood Road, many, many years. Basically, Penny answered our question in the Conservation Commission, and it made it clear here that there's no plan of opening Cedarwood Road, the High School Hill that we got closed 20 years ago. I just want that to be part of the record, if that's possible.
That's my understanding. You mentioned that already.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, Pat. Do you have any input at all at this one time, or do you want to just talk about your process?
As Laura mentioned, stormwater reviews done by Merrill Engineers coming Wednesday. We hope to have a joint hearing tonight, but it's coming Wednesday. We'll be going through all the D E P stormwater standards one by one. We'll also be going through some of the bio offines. Merrill's comments look pretty thorough to us in what happened with those. The only other thing is we received the wetland delineation report today. The applicant had L E C to do a wetland review, and we tie it with environmental, and we got the report today, so that's available to the public. And we pretty much pointed out that most of the wetlands are beyond the scope of where the work is going to take place, and Vernal Pool is the main area of focus. It looks, according to the wetland person who tied it into the meeting, that the site would be adequate for the site to be improved by things that have been planned, with the plantings and keeping the water review. We think that we could work with the applicant about it, and we'll make it an educational space. So we'll be meeting on this Wednesday at 7:00.
Great. Thank you. Any other?
James LeBlanc, James Way. I have a question about the gate that's now being torn up. The traffic's going to be bad enough in the morning. I've been without a gate for years. So why is it now a problem to have the gate, the bed, the student, maybe high school students who can go into the back car in the morning rather than trying to fight the traffic drop off in the bus in the high school?
What's different is the fact that we now have a middle school and a high school, so you have really two separate entities on one site. And because of the parent drop-off for the middle school, basically coming up and going by that gate, we don't want to encourage people going to the high school to either try to pass by those parents or queue up with those parents to then sneak around the back of the high school. So we're keeping those separate. Obviously, the gate is operational, and certainly the intent now is for public safety and for maintenance purposes, that's when that gate could be opened. If for some reason we find that this doesn't work effectively, there's always a chance to open that gate. But everything that we've seen with the number of vehicles coming on the site, the amount of room for vehicles to queue before and after school, we feel that that's going to work effectively for both the middle school and the high school. But we're not, it's not closed off in that it couldn't ever be opened again if it needed to be.
I understand that you go through the other entities, the middle school now, the administration, and that's news, that drop-off. Like, if you find that it would be easier, like, I see the saying, when the middle's still there now, you might have more...
One thing we've done is the way it's set up now with the bus loop is, and all of that space running down the left side of the bus loop, it's a longer queue now for parents than what they currently have in front of the building. So combined, the thought is that that will be able to take care of what currently happens through the bus parking storage area and what happens with the drop-off in front of students.
Okay. Last topic, because I need to get to the board.
Okay. Dan Rosen Jackson, another question, what's the traffic plan on the situation during construction when the First Parish Road entrance is not, it's not there, so all the high school traffic has to get into the 3A?
Yeah, actually, the First Parish entrance will still be available. You just can't go any further than where the turnoff is behind Town Hall. So that is still available to the public.
But the students and staff won't be able to get through the gate?
That is correct. All right. And actually, it kind of becomes part of the educational process, right? Because since the high school won't be able to utilize that access point, they'll be forced to start and use the new traffic flow.
Yep. And when the school starts this year, could they do a test run, close that First Parish Road entrance, to see what's going to happen?
We have not discussed doing that yet, but certainly, we can have that conversation back to the Building Committee level.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public comment here and start a solid report.
Just a couple of quick questions. I think it was already mentioned, Laura mentioned about the buses. So currently, I'm looking at the engineering report of the current conditions, and I see that it looks like about two dozen buses parked there. Is there a plan, or where are those buses going to be parked?
I can't tell you exactly where, but I do know that the school department's in the process of finalizing that plan.
But the plan is to have it be off-site, is that correct? All right. And then the other kind of clarifying question I had was, you know, I really like the green areas of the parking lot for the middle school. I noticed that on the, in front of the high school auditorium, or not auditorium, I'm sorry, the high school gymnasium right now in the old parking lot, those areas that are green, there's not, they just seem like very thin strips. Was there, and there's a recharge underneath that parking lot, so I assume that's all going to have to be redone anyway. Was there thought to increase that green space between the parking rows?
On the north side, and actually, on the whole site, we're also tasked with increasing the amount of parking in the finished condition. So as you know, the north side is heavily constrained with the athletic field, which we are not touching at all, and the gym, the cafeteria, and the new auditorium. So we are really constrained in that we're trying to maximize parking in that area, and there wasn't space available for green directly to the north. We are adding net, after this project is done, 160 spaces to the total site. We predicted that 125 were necessary for the middle school itself, so that's a positive of 35 to help the high school.
Okay. And then the other, I would just, not really a question, but just advocate for the public crossing and the signalization on 3A. And I'm thinking to myself, as you guys were talking, I believe the Green Bush Rotary is the only place you can, that there is a physical crosswalk on 3A, unless I'm mistaken. But I know that was done, obviously...
On Con Street and Cohasset?
Well...
On Con Street and Cohasset?
In Cohasset? I don't know where that is.
You went to Con Street and Cohasset, but there's a middle school, my school's located.
I'm sorry. I'm just kidding. I meant Sidhuitt. I shouldn't be so flippant. So, yeah, but I think as far as like the, that is the only place that I'm aware that a person can physically, legally cross 3A. So it would certainly be, I think, helpful to advocate for more locations and a crosswalk and a signalization from my perspective.
It's a great point, and as everyone in this room knows, we are sidewalk poor here in town, and we'll work to try to make that a better crossing, but wouldn't you know it, you get down to First Parish Road, and there really are no more sidewalks to travel on.
Right.
So we'll do what we can to help with this project.
I know. Well, I've tried to walk down on 123 quite a few times.
That's it.
Thank you. I got a short list. One of the concerns about the parking, I think we suggested, is the carryover of what about 25 feet, the gates now, and the rest of 3A and 3A.
Yeah, and the 125 is far more than Gates has right now. That was, 125 was the number based on the 80's shaft. Yeah, I think it's about 80 total. We use a 1.5 factor for shaft, full-time shaft and full-time equivalent. That's what kind of goes with a 1.5.
I didn't know that. I didn't know that. I didn't hear it though.
Mr. LeBlanc, just pick up, please.
I had a question on how utilities, the additional utilities are going to be brought onto the site?
There are already sewer, water, electrical, gas, and drainage utilities on the site. Portions of those are going to need to be located to account for the middle school building footprint. But the plan is just to continue using those existing services that are on the site and provide additional building services to those names.
To be clear, we've been talking with National Grid, and we're going to bring a new higher voltage primary to the site, a single voltage. They insisted on a single, a single service, I should say. And then we'll have step-down transformers, and we'll split that. And that's overhead onto the site.
So you're going to use...
We're increasing the voltage. We're going to 400 capacity.
Yes. Yes.
I think it's a step on the, the traffic flow on the site. Can't hear you, Bill. Sorry, Jim. I too am concerned about the traffic flow onto the site as well as leaving the site. The Vernal Pool, I'm concerned about giving it access. I think if he's going to come back up and make it more pristine than it is now, then I think you've got to make sure that it stays that way. It may mean giving up the education component on it. The bio basins, I think that's the right approach. I think we'll see the numbers on those. The last one, I think there was a comment about the soils. I think you're going to need to take a couple tests, and then find out what the actual soils are. That's my short list.
We want to quickly, this is, that was great. Oh, there we go. We've done extensive soil testing. I think we've gone out two or three times. This graphic is a little cluttered, but if you look at the blue boxes, both shades of blue, and the red and orange circles, that indicates all the locations throughout the site where borings or test pits have been dug to explore groundwater conditions and soil textures and ledge conditions. I think there's one in almost every single footprint for stormwater. There might be one or two where they're just to the side. In most cases, that has to do with just the existing site and some constraints, not wanting to impact existing paved areas. But we'll take another look at that and make sure we're covered. But we felt that the soil was pretty consistent across the site, so we have really good coverage here.
There were a couple of, Merrill had suggested taking a decision for it, right?
They did?
We've talked to them about that.
Yeah.
You feel we've been pretty comprehensive, and we'd be happy to give you a hold of it.
Okay. We're not checked out on this high-fluid technology.
I'll accomplish the problem. I certainly am concerned about traffic, as is everyone else, and wondered if any administrative changes or adjustments have been considered to perhaps alleviate the problem. The two obvious ones that come to mind are standard... The two obvious ones that come to mind are staggered, uh, middle school and high school start times and, uh, and, uh, at the end of school, staggering, staggering that time as well. Or, uh, looking at somehow restricting, uh, high school student parking. I know a lot of schools restrict parking to seniors only, restrict parking to honor students only, uh, things like that. Um, I'm not saying that those are terrific, you know, ideas, and there may be other reasons why they've worked less well, but it would be one way to, uh, administratively address traffic flows, it seems to me.
Um, my concern, and I'm gonna echo that for traffic, I think we've talked all about that, my, my looking at a secondary factor there is, is after this past winter and thinking forward about plowing, I noticed that this additional new parking lot has a, it's like a retaining wall, and then I know where that path is down, so it's going up there, and I'm just thinking of, you know, with this loop and the gate and access not being behind the school, you know, we're turning around in front of the school, we have the vegetation along the new vernal pool, I'm just thinking if we have a winter even half as bad as, as the path past winter, you know, where is it all gonna go? We're gonna spend a lot of time getting it out from up at the school and maybe bringing it back down here to the, behind the Town Hall and the police station, and again, these narrow drop-off lanes are great, but having cloud in the path, they're, they're difficult for, for somebody that's, you know, been up for 10, 12 hours to, to, to do that, and then to also get the snow out of the way so that, you know, parking is, is adequate and access is adequate. And then again, if we do get a crosswalk and the walkers coming in and across, um, you know, the snowbanks are concerned, they were a big concern this, this past winter. So, um, you know, in the spring, summer, and fall, everything's gonna be great, but I think with, with the winter, we can, you know, some fun needs to be put on, on where is it all gonna go?
Have you done any orbit all on the snow removal?
We, we actually have considered snow removal with this, and I, I actually think, uh, there's an opportunity that's not shown right now, especially the south side of that new lot, to maybe do some additional clearing so we can create some more storage areas.
Yeah, that, that's what I was saying, is that might be the only way to get that lot.
Yeah, and, and around that lot, we, we don't actually have a retaining wall on the, on the high side, but as you know, it is a steep slope.
Oh, yes. No, I knew that that would happen.
Right.
And you're not gonna be climbing it up.
Correct.
My own thought.
Yep.
Just a point of clarification, will all of the utilities, the wires, will they all be underground, or are they going to be?
Yeah, the existing, the existing utility poles will be maintained. Um, I don't believe we are adding any poles, but services will be brought underground from those existing poles to the future site. So crossing through the site, it's all underground.
Will you be putting more lighting around the building, because now, Don's gonna be showing.
Yes. Yes.
Actually, we, we are, and we've done a photometric calculation on, on the entire site, which Don is gonna go find. But, uh, I think what's important is that it's set up to be both vehicular and pedestrian safe, uh, but the fixtures that we're using are also dark sky compliant, and there'll be cut-off features, uh, to be cut-off fixtures, so light will not be spilling beyond the property line.
Can you speak up?
Sorry, this is pedestrian sites, uh, this is, uh, that's also possible. There's, um, roughly 20-foot-high, uh, fixtures that are along, along the roadway and in the parking areas, basically where all the vehicular traffic goes. So they're roughly 120 feet apart, and they're roughly 20 feet tall. And then, uh, in the pedestrian areas, around here, inside the courtyard area, and up by the auditorium, we're installing 12-foot-high pedestrian scale fixtures in those areas, so.
We also be putting lights in the back parking lot.
Yes.
Um, one other thing in terms of traffic, I find utilizing a straight shot and head up to the back, very, very difficult because of the way this is configured. People aren't sure whether they should continue straight, or whether they should take a right and go in front of the building, and then go back and merge into the traffic. I really think for both of those loops, it has to be better defined, and probably it should be one way only, or only an entrance for buses.
Signage.
Signage or some description, because it is very, very difficult, uh, when you're going to town meeting, if you're going to support an event, to try to figure out the best way to access that parking lot.
Yeah, no, you're, you're, you're right on, Ann. And this, this is buses only right here, and we will have signage identifying that, uh, and, you know, the parent queue all the way up to the far end of this cafeteria. The drop-off will be here, loop round, and come right back out, so that'll be made clear also.
And are the roofs flat?
The roofs are pitched to drains. So I think you're asking if they're sloping like a house, the answer is no, but they are membrane roofs, and everything is pitched into drains, interior drains that takes it out through the, inside the door.
And if so, will you be up shovel?
I won't be, no.
I noticed what a good pass, I finished on here, is somebody here from 61 Morton Street? Okay, well, we'll hold on, we'll let it go for a few more minutes. I just had a few follow-up questions to it. I do think that the traffic issue is gonna be missed here, and we would like to have the benefit of, uh, the fourth of March, you know, looking at it as well. I do think the issue, that the intersection is gonna be significant. It seems to me if people are taking rights and lefts at three degrees in First Parish, it becomes very difficult to take a right and somebody tries to take a left from the same location, you know, from the traffic, et cetera. So hopefully, we'll be able to address those kinds of things. Um, I did have a question for you on the vernal pools, and kind of how you develop the stormwater plan, and it looked like you were moving a lot of stormwater in these , uh, biotention spaces. Does that end up impacting the closing of the street for the vernal pool?
Don, I don't, can you go back to that? So the watershed map here, you can see, um, the vernal pool is located in a darker blue, and the lighter blue area surrounding it is the watershed that goes towards the vernal pool. Um, so there are two green gardens that are directly adjacent to the vernal pool, one on the right and one on the left. Um, those do flow down the water, um, filter it, and then overflow from them goes to the vernal pool. So it provides treatment before distributing into the vernal pool.
So those, those don't, those don't infiltrate down?
There's two components. What water does get filtered through would go into groundwater, um, and then overflows for larger storms, might flow over, um, and do a surface flow into the vernal pool.
Is this the, the observations, the mission to look at that? Are you just worried that you're moving water in different places and actually starting to sort of start with the?
Well, I should note, too, um, when we did the analysis, we wanted to match the water that's going to the vernal pool, we didn't want to reduce it, we didn't want to increase it, we wanted to match it. Uh, and we actually looked at the maximum pounding level for all the storm events. I think we're within literally inches of the, the same pounding depth, because you do, you know, you want that existing habitat to, to maintain.
There's one other thing about, uh, the proposed design with all the infiltration basins there, adjacent to the, uh, vernal pool, the characteristics of the soils, you're gonna have much better base flow, because we're actually increasing the amount of infiltration in the area, so that's actually a little bit, um, healthier, because you don't have the flashiness of going up and down, you have more base flow there.
We did have, uh, if you want a big point that we had, uh, Darren Joseph provided to Nancy, uh, the lanes they do, we, I think we have a better, having some, so, uh, some of those will become, so, uh, there'll be many things there. Well, I, I think that's, you've reached the end here, and, um, we still have, I think one, at least one open issue, I think, with the traffic. My suggestion is, is to get that traffic, bring this up at the next, um, I think we had a time, that we could've plugged in, which was, uh, 27 blocks? Did you mention that? Yeah.
Just one point of clarification, because Bob Vogel, uh, brought it up, and, and, you know, administratively, traffic can be handled by putting the schools on different start times and dismissal times. I mean, up until this past year, gates in the high school had been on different times. So it's simply by, if you went back to that system, which, you know, again, is a possibility, um, then the site is, is no different, if not even a little better, than what currently exists, uh, which is not good, and we're not saying it's good. But again, I think, you know, we're, we could be overplaying traffic a little bit. Traffic will be a problem if the schools are arriving at the same time. No, no question about that. If you delayed them by half an hour difference in terms of start and dismissal, you know, then, then you are going to alleviate, um, the traffic problem. You create some other, you know, deficiencies. There's, there's some advantages of going at the same time, both educationally from a program standpoint, as well as some efficiencies, which is one of the advantages of having the two schools on the same campus. But if the traffic overwhelms, you know, the ability to do that, then we may have to go back to half-hour, um, differences in times. And that will mitigate traffic issues. This will never be a great site traffic-wise, and the high school is located here and struggles with traffic, it just does. It's very narrow, you've got wetlands on either side, and you come out to an intersection that needs improvement. There's no question about that, that we have to work on ways to try to improve, you know, it's dangerous now getting out there, and we don't have another school here. So, so that's the consideration. The other thing that was brought up tonight is keeping in mind, is that public safety is moving. By the time the school opens, public safety moves, that improves traffic, because that takes away a risk, when, you know, that public safety has to exit in, in, uh, in a hurry to get out of here, particularly at a time when we've got students arriving or getting dismissed. So those, those are some of the considerations. One other thing I want to bring up, too, is about the gates in the back, uh, side of the building, on the east side of the building. Those gates are designed to be closed during the school day, but can be opened after school to allow flow for events. Because one of the problems also in getting, getting out of here, whenever you have a large event, whether it's, uh, something that'll, in the gymnasium, the auditorium, or the athletic field, um, is how to get out, and you'll end up with a lot of traffic. Those gates will be allowed to be open so that you can then exit and enter both ways. So there are some site improvements here to traffic, not to mention the additional parking spaces, um, which also help considerably. So, so keep in mind, all of those things, I think traffic is a problem, but it can be, it can be mitigated with simple administrative dismissal times. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, um, I think what we're suggesting is that we continue this discussion until August 27, and, um, 9 o'clock. Request from somebody, continue. Laura, you need a request for continue?
Just, uh, talk about that, and it sounds like they can, how many, uh, some, some are.
Okay.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the site plan administrative review, stormwater permit, public carings for both middle schools at 460, First Parish Road, but 606 Chief Road, District Highway, until August 27, 2015, at 9:00.
And, uh, the Town Hall rights, you know, we're gonna be, we're, 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 we're gonna be, we're gonna be. You have second amendment favor?
Hi.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, do we have anybody here from 61 Morton Street?
Yes, thanks to you guys. Thanks to everybody.
Thank you very much. Everybody is out. People flag on the morning, people were walking.
I just want to have a flag and a flag. And the Congress cop on the forest.
That's okay, no, we're done. I just received a, yeah.
Tony's just going to.
And I was like, looking up the site.
I don't think it matters.
I'm gonna go to the desk, I think you sent it.
For single-family homes, 61 Morton Street, accessory parks, 16-200 B, for applicant district levels until September 10, 2015, at 9:45.
I need who you are. For the others.
I think, I think we touched on it.
Okay. 36 Tilden Road.
Yeah, yeah, for the record, Gregory Morris, registered engineer, more than a year, representing John Tedeschi. We filed a street roadway application for, uh, proposed House 46, Tilden Road. Uh, it's a vacant property right now. Uh, it's lined along the right-of-way of Tilden Road by a stone wall. That stone wall has an existing cup within it that we're gonna be utilizing for our proposed driveway. What brings us here, though, is along this proposed driveway, there are nine trees that we're asking to be removed, those are located in the Tilden Road right-of-way. Um, of the nine trees, eight of them are maple trees, one of them is pine tree.
That's our request.
Laura?
Thank you, Laura. Um, so, there are a couple things happening here, there are nine trees being removed. Um, John has volunteered to provide six trees, uh, those instances to be determined, uh, a lot of them to.
There is, and the elevation, I did look at that, but the elevation above the roadway just wouldn't work that. Absolutely.
No, that was my only concern. I'm calling here, how ever, I'm just asking.
Yeah, it's even close to have something close to where John Rich is. I think the people arrive as high as they can, they want to.
Absolutely. About 30 feet.
I just wanted to clarify a question. Shouldn't have to wait, does it connect with?
Yes, it does. He said, show them.
Wait, that's so embarrassing.
They are lying.
Yeah, Dr. Cor.
Pardon.
And I'm just asking to ask, so there are nine trees being removed, upcoming from like six trees to the right of one.
I like the option.
Why six trees? They're supposed to not be.
Why, why green light? It's already.
You know, there was such a gap in that they were going to plant them in that 30-foot right-of-way, but it's a heavily treated with small little maple. It made no sense if I wanted to purchase some of the wood that might be, or after that, or maybe it's dying, or something like that. I just thought.
I'm totally on, I have five trees. How did it come up with these six?
Okay, as long as the two words on the board, I can.
Good question, Johnny. If you look at other potential layouts, you find House's ultimate layout, you have potential.
It's actually, if you look at 30-foot area, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, it just made, I think the right decision to keep it, it was all a part of it.
It's all big.
Yeah, instead of taking the whole apartment.
What's the other question? Can trees be somewhere on scenic way?
I kind of love it.
Certainly.
We didn't, this is.
It's urban. Yeah. You know, see the building.
I'm just saying, use like, maybe somebody else who lost a tree, they can see where it was somewhere, but it's.
Yeah, I'm just saying, let's make that a condition as opposed to.
Not a condition. I mean, the condition would, yeah. I'm not.
I did.
I appreciate that.
That's awesome. Do we accept, instead of buying, you know, how to label some, put it on there, or sell it?
Suggest, or hurt, right down, the location of the scene.
I'm just, yeah. If I was to say, John has provided, say, will provide the six trees, will have the town. Same growth.
But the last thing that I'm pushing, that's what I don't understand. So if the president decides to follow our convention. I think so.
It's a force of the pound.
There's a draft motion, and at the end it says, the highway of public grounds to Harvard, with input from the town mayor, say, for the ultimate placement. Or you could add on to that with locations on scene growth being preferred.
That's fine. Yeah, I agree. John's just providing. I know, but I want to keep the main issue.
I'm planning more votes to prove the rule on following trees in the right-of-way for the system of connection with access and safe distance and protection of proposed single family house. Nine trees consisting of one 18-inch palm, three 12-inch maple, one big engine pole, three six-inch maple, one three-inch maple, that means less than three inches. Then the proposed driveway right-of-way to allow access and safe site distance, no additional tree alteration in right-of-ways permitted. Approximately eight trees, temporary stone wall disturbance or underground utilities will be required. Temporary stone walls disturbance will be prepared. The applicant shall provide six trees of major species of a minimum 2.5 inches caliber to the state highway department. The highway and public parks department, input from the town, then determine placement and locations on scene and growth being.
All those a favor? Aye. Thank you. I'm going to choose. So, so we're not a favor. Yeah, yeah.
Just like going to the tree box.
Yeah. Okay. I'm investing. Full business to business. Three more.
I am going to pay $1,000, $300 to the Maryland Department, and use for the stormwater treatment, into your current, outside this area. $605 to Maryland years for the construction services of the new school. $100,000 for the license video, for legal avenues for the 15 custom roads, to the road extension. Right.
Okay. And I move to the improvement of the city board meeting, um, three minutes for July 23rd, 2015. Aye. If you have a minute, we're arguing. All right. We have, of course, 3 o'clock, we have to start with CVC. We've had a couple of conversations with boards like them right now. The planning board representatives on this CVC with respect to policy apparently trying to implement this year. After six years of continuous service on the board, they would like to change the route. This came up, you and I have discussed in the other, uh, I think Laura had suggested maybe not a lot of, it's first let Bill talk about. Me, I'm like, that may be, do this job. Whether it's somebody else.
They spend days once a month in the, well, we call it, panel meeting. During the same process, we go through the way to the NBL, goes through a series of hearings, like Phil said, typically quite a month, three times a week. But it should come back up and give a little opinion, or do either of the articles that have been submitted. Once the articles have been submitted and voted on, then this presentation in terms of board select and as well as if by individual. What we've done in the past is to come back up and have a liaison work with the individual articles that are being presented. When they come back up and you have a person on the board, or two people, a person involved on the board, who becomes the spokesman, recommendation, who's the board, and I would present that particular article.
So each project has a, sort of a lead person?
Yeah. The other way that we've done it in the past is to look at it, whether it's an easy meeting or a difficult article, and then they kind of try to schedule.
As the liaison, Bill, are you a voting member of this process?
You're a voting member of the process. There are certain committees, the planning board and CONCOM both have representation on that, on a meeting, well, it's agreed. Does it take a commitment to answer, yes? Is there heavy lifting, it depends on what you agree to be the liaison?
Sometimes.
I spend a fair amount of time on, because I want to, I'm very supportive of the CVC as well as, because of the fact that I'm retired, I've got more free time to be there.
And we can say, you kind of need that free time to do this.
I think, I think.
Easy to do after hours.
Oh, no, you can come back up and do it.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever volunteers, I'd be more than happy to work with them, and contribute to the process or the history.
I'll volunteer.
I'd be, I'd be a bit concerned with the change of the whole membership of the CVC.
Well, I don't think it's being changed entirely, I think.
All the board representatives are going to change.
Yes.
Because it's, they all have, they had a lot better.
Pardon. For everybody else. Have you volunteered?
Yeah, I volunteered.
You can handle being that's in.
I would support it.
You're transitioning in?
Yep.
Anybody else?
We need a nomination and a motion.
If I nominate in, it's be the liaison on the planning board for the CVC. Second thing.
All those a favor? Aye. Okay, you got it.
Let me ask this question. There's two others that are out there, one is traffic rules and regulations, and the other is, well, the street acceptance. I think I may have old number, six years.
Isn't that really the contract rule, wasn't that always the chairman that did traffic rules? No, street acceptance. Wasn't that always?
No, it's always the chairman of what's elected, we've been, it's always been whoever agrees to do it. But I don't know whether that's, if you care, maybe you can check and see whether we need to make an appointment or do that.
All right.
Who's lost time to the street acceptance meeting? That's not very much, I mean, it's not a huge.
I mean, whenever there's a petition, if it comes in, the board, the petition, it comes in, it comes back up and meet and discuss whether they want to begin the process or the process is.
Last one I remember was the older one. Or, for instance, I would, that comes through those?
Uh.
Or is that, I thought it was one, they wanted it.
Yeah, they wanted to be voted. Typically, if you get a subdivision within the first year, they come back up and then vote. So you have to find votes.
So you'll check on it, Karen? Personally, years ago, they wanted, something that's. But if you, you know, if you're looking for.
No, I can do it.
Um, any other liaison reports?
Well, I have a couple of guys, well, yeah, the design review, I think the notes, there was an email that was sent down by John Roman, and they were formulating those notes.
I just saw them, right, it just came out of?
Yeah.
Five o'clock.
Yeah, I think Laura just forwarded it to everyone. So basically, I think it was already kind of summarized about the high school, or it's middle school. They were concerned about the overall signage of the area, that was one issue. And then some of the materials, also they liked that improved, the fact that it was a little darker red. For the performing arts center, the back of the existing high school gymnasium, there's now they've done some nice treatments, there was some signage there. So I think that, this was the second time that they met with the design review committee. And so the team, I think, went through and tried to adjust or address all the items that were brought in. So the only thing sort of outstanding, I guess, would still be the signage.
Do you mind, Laura?
I think the signage was the main thing, they got the information.
I learned that we approved one thousand three hundred dollars to the Merrill Corporation Merrill Teams for the show my people to see. I think you're there for part of five years. Six hundred fifty dollars to Merrill Teams for the protection of action services in the school. And one hundred million dollars for the website to take out this video of legal avenues for the two system rallies to the location.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I know that we approved the subject anymore to meet um three minutes for July twenty third, two thousand fifteen.
Ready? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, the agents on the course. We thought we'd start with uh the C B C. We've had a couple of conversations with this board selection round. I don't think it's gonna be on the C B C with respect to policy apparently trying to implement this year. After six years of continuous service on board, they would like to change the plan. This came up when I had my session. I think Laura had suggested maybe make a lot of these. It's first let Bill talk about.
They spend the evenings once a month in the well quality hall, panel meeting. During the same project, we go through what we have been doing else. Those are a series of hearings that we fill the schedule typically in quite a month. We have three companies, which come back up and give opinions for new each of the articles that have been submitted. Once the articles have been submitted and voted on, there's then this presentation in terms of board selects and as well as individual articles. What we've done in the past is to come back up and have a liaison work with the individual articles that are being presented. So they come back up and you have a person on the board or two people, a person involved on the board, who becomes the spokesman, recommendation and who's the board and I would present the article.
So each project has a sort of a main person?
Yeah. The other way that we've done it in the past is to look at it whether it's an easy and medium or a difficult article and then they kind of try to schedule it.
How does that's the liaison, Bill? Are you a voting member of this process?
You're a voting member of the process. There are certain committees that the planning board and town comp both have representation on this meeting as well as our agreement. Does it take a commitment to answer? Yes. It's very lifting and depends on which you agree to be the liaison. I spend a fair amount of time on because I want to, I'm very supportive of the C B C as well as because of the fact that I'm retired and get more free time than you have to carry.
And we can say you kind of need that free time to do this.
I think, I think.
Easy to do after hours.
Oh, no, you can come back up and then.
Yep.
Whoever, whoever, whoever volunteers, I'll be one happy to work with them. Through the process or the history.
I'll volunteer.
I'd be, I'd be a bit concerned with the change of the whole membership of the C B C.
Well, I don't think it's being changed entirely. I think.
All the board members are going to change.
Yes.
Because it's evolved. Yeah, a lot better.
For everybody else. Is there a year volunteer?
Yep, I volunteer.
I always supported.
Transitioning?
Yep.
Anybody else? We don't got to hear one about. So, uh, we need a nomination of this motion.
I nominate Ann to be the liaison on the planning board to the C B C.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you got it.
Let me ask this question. There's two others that are out there. One is traffic rules and regulations and the other is what is street acceptance? I think I may have owned them for six years.
Five.
Isn't that really the traffic rules? Wasn't that always the chairman that did traffic rules? No, street acceptance. Wasn't that always?
No, it's always the chairman of board select. It always depends whoever, whoever agrees to it. But I don't know whether that's. If you care, maybe you can check and see whether we need to make a point on that or do that.
When's the last time the street acceptance? It's not very much. I mean, it's not a huge.
They meet whenever there's a petition that comes in, the board is a free petition. Come back up and meet and discuss whether they want to begin the process or what the process is.
Uh. Last time I remember was all. Or for instance, I would venge on drive. Did that come through those?
Uh.
That's the top one they wanted to do.
Yeah, they wanted to vote. Typically, if you get a subdivision within the first year, they come back up and then vote.
So you'll check on it? Personally, if you're still big one, it doesn't pass. Thought if you, you know, you're looking for.
No, I can do it.
Um, any other liaison reports?
Well, I have a wonderful guys. Well, yeah, the design review, I think the notes, there was an email that was sent down by John Roman and they were formulating those notes.
I just saw them, right? Just came out of five o'clock?
Yeah, yes, I think Laura just forwarded them to. So, um, basically, I think it was already kind of summarized about the high school or middle school. They, they were concerned about the overall signage of the area. That was one issue. And then some of the, the materials also they liked that improved, the fact they removed the darker brick. For the performing arts center, the back of the existing high school, which amazing is now they've done some nice treatments, there was some signage there. So I think that this was the second time that they met with the design review committee. And so the team, I think, went through and tried to adjust or address all the items that were on it. So the only thing sort of outstanding, I guess, would still be the signage.
Do you remember, Laura? I think the signage was the main thing. They, they got the information they were looking for in the lights and they wanted some benches added. So I think.
Yeah, it was pretty good overall. I think they were really happy with, well, they were happy with the materials and the things, the way that the team addressed it to their concerns. Uh, the other item.
It sounded like they need to really.
I think they need to get a revised plan, just make sure it's sort of checked off, whatever they're doing.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like they need some good impact.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. And then on the public safety complex, um, you know, I had a little bit different opinion. I mean, I think the design review was not terribly concerned about the materials because, you know, they, they did a lot of value engineering. They lost the brick on the public safety building, they lost the stone. They've made quite a few changes to the overall massing in the sense of they might, it was going to be originally three bays. Now that's like there are several options. There's uh basically two bays and one, the three bays is another option. In the back, the Sally Court, they lost one of the Sally Courts.
That's because of pricing.
Exactly, exactly. So then the public safety complex team has actually gone through several options or alternatives. And so basically what the design review committee was mostly concerned about is the materials. And now it's going to be pretty much just either work society or there's a senior, it's not senior changes, cement changes. But, you know, overall, it doesn't look bad. I mean, I'm a little disappointed. I feel like it's not as permanent. I think, and you had made a comment about the fact that, you know, we shouldn't be penny wise and pound foolish. These, these buildings are going to hopefully last under years or so. So, but the design review essentially, I think, signed off on materials and the value engineering up to this point.
Did they change the gables?
Yeah, in fact, I think they might even have that with me.
Coming in two weeks, right?
How much over budget did they?
They didn't go into details about like how much.
They lowered those gables.
Well, they lowered it.
Here's the new.
Response to the fact that they weren't winding it up.
Oh.
And so actually, they, they did.
They lowered the forty feet.
Yeah, they did bring down the gables. I made a comment that that one shed, the one shed dorm was a little funny. I thought it was a little bit, you know, it's a.
That one shed door, where is that?
Yeah, that one, exactly. Looked a little bit funny to me. It was all really aesthetic. They lost the, I don't know, the front, the pergola. And, uh, what else? Yeah, mainly was the materials I think they tried to reduce.
Well, as long as they don't do it in cinder block and paint it red, they'll be far ahead of the game.
You don't like red?
Yeah, I think it's a curve pose of the unit too.
Whoa, that's a lot.
There's a big number.
That was about ten, ten percent of the budget.
But do they, do they commit to the town under budgeted? In other words, should they have made seventeen change rather than sixteen?
I don't know.
I don't know what they came to that.
I think they kept adding things.
I mean, in the same timeframe, the library was put out, the library came in, you have a hundred thousand bucks.
Well, maybe they can call some of that money out.
They're trying to give it back.
But I think in general, the.
I think there's a, there's also alternates to the bid.
Yes, yes.
I know the third or the third Sally Court.
Right. So they're hoping that they can actually, you know, it'll come in because it's going out to bids. And if it comes in under what they expect, then they'll be able to do several different alternates. And the way that the team was explaining was that they have to, the prior, I guess for the state, I think it is, or the criteria, they have to prioritize their alternates so that, for instance, let's say they find some more money and one of them, like their priority ultimate number one was the Sally Court. They have to do the Sally Court. They can't just suddenly decide, well, you know, we'd like to add the other bay instead. So they have to know what they want. They have to know what they want in advance.
Priority is so that you can't adjust who gets to know bid, right? Society of the locals.
So, but like I said, in general, I think the design review committee signed off on the changes and they thought that they were positive or agreed. And then the last thing that they looked on Tuesday was the, on Fourth Place, was it thirteen? Uh, the one, like the little base? Yeah, yeah. Well, it's not, it's going to be like for electricians, plumbers, that's what he really wants to run out to. And so it's tradespeople. Um, and they had nice elevations. I don't know if everyone's seen it, but they really did a nice job. High five. Very nice. It looks like the Jacob Hach building. I mean, there's barn doors. It looks like a kind of oversized barn. Nice materials. So I think the design review committee was quite happy. They did make some suggestions about when you're driving on Fourth Place, there's a big lot in front of the existing house where, because there's that lot, you're going to see this building, that, that, I don't know, with correctional, I guess that would be the north elevation of the, the.
Right, from the side.
From the side. So they made some suggestions about kind of maybe adding some fake barn doors or some fake things to kind of break up that elevation because it was pretty large. But not the existing building, the new. The new building, the new building. And so, but overall, it's, that seemed pretty positive too. That's kind of what happened at the design review. And they're going to meet before, I think on September tenth, is that right, Laura?
No, it goes September.
It's September. They're meeting, I know, one time before and the planning board meeting in September.
Okay, so September.
Because I think the, um, the board place people are going to come back to the, the design review before we actually see it. Because I think it's on our agenda on.
September?
Yeah. So there should be one more iteration. I had a question for Ann about stop short coalition. Like, I know in the past, those have been, like, since a lot of times it happened on Thursdays. And just to, are you still a chairperson? Can you make me aware of when those are?
But what we're trying to do is not necessarily not mean it's often, but we might switch it out so there's a morning meeting and then another evening meeting. And we're working on putting together, it's really interesting to the medical community to really bring it all together. We're working on, you will be know of that.
Great. Okay. Let me just ask Laura if she had anything to say.
Uh, just one quick thing. Uh, the D P W is offering to do some kind of a tour of, of some of the subdivisions. And I think they're particularly interested, it could be sort of like a field trip, it could be on a Saturday morning or some other time when everyone's available and maybe has an hour, well, more than an hour, probably be several hours to spare. And I think they're particularly interested in going over to, to Tilden State's, to Evangeline Drive and bringing one of their snowplows and showing how, you know, sort of challenging it is to plow given the size of the road. It, it sounds interesting. They used to do it years ago.
I'll be up and at it.
Yeah, they wanted to do that again, yeah.
Yeah.
Great, so Saturday, a Saturday morning would be okay?
Yeah.
You don't want to wait for a snowstorm and have it here, real?
Yeah, well, we can do that too. That's like the extra credit reason.
In general, are they just saying that the, not.
The roads aren't widening?
The width?
They have a problem with the width. I think it's the width and they don't like asphalt burn because it just gets torn off.
They tear it up to the lining, right?
Okay. Second, on just the recreation department, they had a meeting last night.
Go for it.
They're really focusing on Willow's Block. Willow's Block is about to turn the corner and actually start being profitable. They had somebody recently moved to town, it was a golf, they drove in the park on Willow's Block, I thought that was part of the company. Presentation that it was a golf portion that it was, you know, the course itself, you know, hadn't played it in a while, it was very nice, very well taken care of by the management company, but the, the herb appeal or the entrance, they're talking with Kennedys maybe to try and dress it up or see what they can do as far as, you know, stormwater, repaving the driveway, they've got some parking lots, they've got some bids. They, after they turned the corner and we started making some money, they wanted, the building isn't very inviting. There's no like grand entrance, you can't see it, so they wanted to maybe do that and then, you know, a long-term third phase, whatever, you know, maybe have a function room so they can have larger golf tournaments with more people, more revenue, that kind of thing. Other than that, there's a big thumbs up to the lifeguard, they had a pretty good year with, you know, what the kids were asked to do and what they actually did. And then some things with Title Nine and softball field at the school, where we, where we can put it and, you know, where some of the reasons that rockers might have to put it on the campus, so it's the same as baseball, maybe move the JV field somewhere else. So, things like that. The camp, so it went well, all that stuff, so.
Let me jump on with the, I've been working with the E D C as part of the marketing. There's an opportu, I, I think there's an opportunity to come back up and use the C B C money to come back up and one part of the market. What it does is gives them an opportunity and recreation is really, I think, going to be the prime benefactor of the opportunity to come back up. During the winter, you can come back up and go down ten and back up one for West Country skiing or something like that, shit of nature. You can put in two hockey rinks in there, one sticks, one no sticks.
Park and hide.
Two parking lots.
We talked about last year.
Well, I, I think that it was.
Got snowed over.
Yeah.
But I think if you came back up and it was a paved parking lot, I think it would go the whole way.
But wasn't that parking lot purposely got, you know, pervious? It has part of the overall green, which was designed.
It's all hard, well, yeah, but it's all, it's all hard stuff.
Yeah, it was junk.
It runs off, right?
It's not pervious, no.
No, it never was. It was junk.
Half of it's paved. So part of it's paved, part of it's hard.
Really? I didn't, I didn't know that was that.
I mean, it used to be entirely.
It was all part of, you know, when it come up.
But I think, but I think there was not a person.
Thank you. It was, it was, uh, there was an article in Golf Magazine about how green it was and how we felt friendly with all that. Parking lot was a little hard.
Well, what ended up happening, I think, we discussed it in the C D box, Anderson's there, and Monty Newman has really, and, um, Kelly, they really have taken a point on this because it does look awful.
Well, there's no question.
There's no question. And I think that after the lawsuit, if you remember those people that have been around, that certain people lost interest in it. And basically, at this point in time, it set up to fail. So Monty and a few others are really, you may disagree with me, Bill, but it is.
No, no, it was set up to fail, but I think there was a reality that sit there and said, look, there's an opportunity to put in a golf course in the general area in the place that was the first one. And I think they came back up and took orders on the big.
Well, they got the first one in and then they didn't, I mean, we were, I was on the planning board at the time that it was terminated. And was told when I asked the question, in three years, we were putting a function hall, well, that was seventeen years ago. And it's still not there. The best view from the clubhouse, if you will, is from the men's bathroom. So, I mean, you have tremendous.
Could use some sprucing up and challenge with a function hall.
Question about that.
The challenge with a function hall. And a lot of these private clubs have discovered this, you've got to keep it busy or you've got a big mortgage that you've got to pay for limited revenue. So you really have to be careful.
I, I understand that, but there are, there is a faction that would like to sell it and develop it. And one of the things that I would say to whoever wants to do that, once that premier piece of property is gone and developed, we're done. And that, it really, we are done.
Can you sell it with, what I was, we talked about this before, like an R F P and say it has to be like a, an inn or a spa or a function hall, like, so that it's not, let's say condominium or something like. You can. Yeah, you can say R F P.
If you're trying to be kind of an eye hole executive force in some sort of, or, or scale.
I think that would run a lot of golfers out.
Well, I guess, but again, what I think we talked about before is if there was an inn and a spa and a function hall, all right there.
Let's see, you have to understand that once upon a time, and Bill, I'm sure you will remember this, there was supposed to be a nine hole golf course, a hotel and condominiums and twenty thousand square feet retail space in conjunction with Central Conference Club, which had the clubhouse. And it all went south. So.
If it all comes down, it's a great idea, but if they continue it, it's worth it.
So how serious is this, the idea of selling? I'm just curious.
It's out there.
And it seems like, I mean, I'm sorry, because I know you're an awful lot, but it seems a good idea to me.
To sell it?
To sell it.
I, I'm, we haven't disagreed with you.
Right now, you're laying back to lean.
Right.
You're getting five hundred thousand dollars.
But is it being utilized in that split?
That's in return to the fact that it is one of the most beautiful spots in this town. And when it's gone, Richard, it's gone. And you'll never, ever get that view, you will never get. We paid back in nineteen, whatever year it was, Boss Sandy Brown, his best investments down in the bay. And it's more than paid in terms of recreation and what have you. To let that go was really tragic. Absolutely tragic. But that's.
Well, I certainly want to control the development or have a say in it, meaning that it would happen to be for.
Who's managing it right now?
Uh, Bob Sanders, they have a management company.
No, but who's managing the sort of redevelopment? Is this coming through the E D C? Is that really what they're trying to do?
Not that I know of.
No, they're looking for some. They were, they were attached with White, British, with the other market.
Yeah. But that was, the curb appeal was the big thing, just to get golfers to realize that it is a golf course. You have to pull in the parking lot, at least the walk up to that front. And that's the difficulty about that.
And the sad part of, the sad part is that for years, until somebody went into town ball and raised a little bit of a racket, there was a huge pile of asphalt in the parking lot. It had been in years. And when somebody really said something, within two days, it's gone.
So I have a question for Laura. Do you know of anything about the, on another subject, since we talked about the Conway proposal? Or does that get rebid from the M D T A? Does that process? Like if they, if the M D T A says, okay, we're going to give you your money back, does the whole process start again?
I don't think so. I think they're going to go to number two.
I figure they have to go with number two proposal yet.
Okay, so that potentially, if that does happen, then number two bidder can come before us with a proposal, correct?
All right.
Okay, second box one.
You can. All those in favor?
Aye.